This conference will now be recorded.
Let's go ahead and start. Meeting is 5:30. Got a roll call, please?
Mr. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Mr. Stover.
Here.
Mr. Tweedy.
Here.
Here. If you want to stand for the opening prayer, it's a pleasure to lead this place to.
Praise. Our Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've given us. We're thankful for the privilege we have in living in this community. We thank you for it. Praise you bless our citizens, bless our city workers, praise you bear with our first responders and everyone that has a part in taking care of us. We pray that you, with this time we have now, and pray that you give our commission. Thank you for their willingness to serve. Pray that you just give them great wisdom tonight with the ability to deliberate on things successfully if they need to decide tonight. And we pray your blessing on the entire evening, in Christ's name.
Amen. Praise our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any addition or deletions to the agenda?
No matter, there is none.
Did I have a motion for?
I mean, we approve the agenda as written.
Say it.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Awards and proclamations.
Item number one is recognize and honor Jana Herrera Ella Batley in Brooklyn as our Kansas City's Outstanding Student Award Scholarship President for 2023. And so I'm going to read through a little history on this side. You guys, it's also up here on the screen. So the Outstanding Student Program was started in 1984. The City Commission implemented the program to recognize students who are outstanding examples of academic and civic excellence in our community. Each year staff, city staff, as teachers, staff, and administrators. At the Arkansas City Middle School, Arkansas City High School, and Cali College nominate students they think are qualified for this honor. The Outstanding Student Award Committee, appointed by the Mayor Commission, receives all nominations from these three schools. Short and formal interviews are conducted with each nominee, and then committee then chooses three finalists from the school to represent the nominees. Of the nine finalists, a top student is chosen for each school. Of the top three students, one is chosen as the overall City of Arkansas Outstanding Student of the Year and awarded a $1,000 scholarship. The first runner-up receives a $500 scholarship and the second runner-up receives a $250 scholarship from the City of Arkansas City. So this year's overall Outstanding Student for this, which City of Arkansas City is Cali College student Bruno Naif. And the first runner-up is our people's candidate. And the second runner-up is Jana Herrera. And then the top three students are announced, were announced at the Awards banquet, and they were honored there, received certificates of honor of their family. And then Bruno will also get a plaque, a plaque, a person, a badge, awards plaque behind on the wall there. And so his name will get added to that. And I would be happy to name a bigger plaque for him. So if I could have Bruno and Jana. We actually have your checks here.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Jay, would you face that way? Mom's getting a picture.
Congratulations. It's quite an honor to do this. And we thank you for what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Number two on the proclamations, proclaim May 6th to 12th, 2024 as National Nurse Week and May 9th to the 15th, 2024 National Hospital Week in Arkansas City. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas in 1993, the American Nurses Association declared May 6th to the 12th as National Week to celebrate and evaluate nursing professions of each year and celebrate ends of, on May 12th, which was Florence Nightingale's birthday. And whereas National Nurses Week is time for everyone, individuals, employees, other healthcare professionals, community leaders and nurses, to recognize the vast contribution and positive impact of America's over four million registered nurses and for their services, dedicated daily sacrifice in caring for others and improving the health of patients. And whereas a National Hospital Week, May 9th to the 15th, 2024. And whereas a National Hospital Week celebrates the hospital, health systems, men and women who support the health and well-being of communities through the dedication and care from the heart. And whereas celebrating National Hospital Week provides an opportunity to thank all the dedicated individual physicians, nurses, therapists, engineers, food service workers, volunteers, administrators, and more for their contributions. And whereas the hardworking people who staff our nation's hospital, including the registered nurses and other personal SCK health, deserve universal regard and appreciation for keeping our community healthy and safe. Now, therefore, the Mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim May 6th to the 12th, 2024 as National Nurse Week and May 9th to the 15th, 2024 as National Hospital Week in Arkansas City and urges residents to express their appreciation for the people, facilities, and technologies and make trustworthy, reliable healthcare possible in our community and recognize this year's National Nurses Week theme, Nurses to Make a Difference, and National Hospital Week theme, We Are Healthcare. Since we have a doctor here, I want to have him come up and present that to you. Probably didn't know you'd go get this today. What we do every year and stuff. And I want to thank you for your guys' service and stuff, what you do for the hospital and for the people of Arkansas City. I know it's trying to advertise, but we thank you for what you do. I thank you. Everybody works hard, and this is what I was saying.
Sure.
Thank you. We got lucky, Matt, we had somebody here.
And the next proclamation is to proclaim May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Police Week and May 15th, 2024. There was a correct date, I think, for that, as Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Thank you. I've been asked to read the proclamation on behalf of the mayor. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States of America has designated May 15th Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas members of the Arkansas City Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our city. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting citizens against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent, the exception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Arkansas City Police Department has grown to be a modern, scientific, and community-focused law enforcement agency that continually provides an essential and vital public service. Now, therefore, the Mayor of the City of Arkansas City, Kansas, calls upon all citizens of Arkansas City to observe the week of May 12th through the 18th of 2024 as National Police Week. In Arkansas City, with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Arkansas City to observe Wednesday, May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or become disabled in the performance of duty.
Thank you, Chief, for reading that. And I want to thank you all, the police department, for what you guys do. I mean, it's beyond Call of Duty and all the bad publicity going around the country about the police department and all that stuff. I mean, you know, we got the best police department in the country, and we thank you for your service and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. We realize that we do have great support in the community, and we are very thankful for that and the commission's also. And all officers stand up that did come with me. There's some out on call, so.
Number three, proclaim May 12th to 18th, 2020. I mean, no, that's not me. Excuse me, number four, proclaim May 5th to the 12th, 2024 National Music Week in Arkansas City. We have a proclamation for that. Whereas musical plays an increasing important role in our world today, and whereas music is one of the most sublime and human pursuits and subscribed by all races and creeds, and whereas music is the language of all people and is one of the greatest forces of creating peace and harmony. And whereas the National Federation of Music Clubs, dedicated to encourage young musicians, encourage musical knowledge, advance American music, and its cooperating organizations joins forces and lead in May to direct attention to the dynamic influence of music in every living, everyday living. Now, therefore, the Mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, does proclaim May the 5th to the 12th, 2024 as National Music Week. And our Kansas City, and ask all citizens of this community to observe and take part in activities recognizing the importance of music, musicians, musical organizations, through the culture alive of our city, state, nation, world, and recognizing this year's theme, music is yours, mine, and ours. So I don't think we have anybody here for that, so. Consent agenda.
Make a motion, would you approve the consent agenda as written?
Okay. Been moved to second. In a consent agenda, it's approval of April 16th, 2000 regular meeting minutes as written, and then my appointment of James Mayor to the building trade war, and then a resolution authorizing a public hearing at 5:30 on June 8th.
18th.
I mean, June 18th, I'm sorry. 2024 in the commission chambers, so. So it's been moved to second. Any other discussion on it? All favor say aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. New business.
City Managed Department is considering approving our request from Visit Arc City to release funds from the transient guest tax fund for website upgrades in the amount of $6,000.
So we have a request from Jill Hunter at Visit Arc City, and they would like to ask for $6,000 from the transient guest tax funds to upgrade the website. And Jill, she would like to, maybe details on that request.
You might say this few words, we've got an audience here, you know.
I don't know, some people may not know, but transit guest tax is the tax that you pay when you stay in a hotel, and that money is sent to the state and then returned back to the city to help pay for things to try to encourage people to come to our town. We are in the process of improving our website. I do have a social media manager that is working for me. We've got our followers up to over 3,500 now that we're using. We're updating not only our local Visit Arc City website, but we're also working with South Central Kansas and the state of Kansas on the website that they have. So primarily, that's what she will do. Website we have now is very limited as far as what we can put on there. And with Etna coming up in the next couple of years with the new center and everything, we feel it's real important that we do everything we can to get the word out of what we have to offer to people. So we did hire or we did talk to two or three different website designers, and we talked to one that has done websites locally with satisfied customers here in town. He came and showed us what he had to offer. He spoke to our board, answered questions that he had, and we feel like that it's a good choice for us. The website that he's looking at doing is very similar to South Central Kansas' website, so it'll be much easier for the social media manager to work for us. Does anybody have any questions or anything I can help with?
Jill, I got a question. On this visit here, the homepage we looked at, you gave us. Should we have Etna on this thing, too? Because it's not on there.
They'll have various things on there, on like the plan, the trips and stuff like that. If that is specifically something that we want, we can speak to the website designer about doing that. And I will do that whenever we set it up.
Basically, that's Etna thing, especially the Heritage Fund site down around.
Correct.
That's going to be huge.
Yes. Yes, it is. And that's why we're trying to get on board and get our website designed so that by the time that does open, we'll be ready to put the information that we have. But yes, we could certainly do that, providing the Etna committee approves of us doing. We'll have to get approval. Oh, there you go.
But yeah, you need to get it from Sandy Randall.
Yes.
She wants, you know, include us in that. I'm sure she will.
Yes. And when we get Todd starting on developing the website, that's when we want to bring other people in like that in order to enhance what we need.
Commissioners, I did want to mention, I didn't say anything earlier, but with the transient guest tax funds, there are obviously limited uses that could be used for. But, you know, the primary use of it is to increase tourism and get more people back in our community and, you know, sleep in the motel rooms and stuff. So this would be allowable use of those funds.
And we're hoping to create blogs, 48 Hours in Arc City and things you can do and encourage things like that. So that's our main focus.
Jill, you might mention that Momo is working on the 48 Hours in Arc City.
Yes. I don't know. Momo is her nickname. Rochelle O'Kado Connet is my social media manager, and she is working on the blogs and stuff with that. And she's already posting stuff. If you follow Visit Arc City on Facebook, you'll see everything that's going on in the area. We post everything that's going on, and you don't, you just send it to me and let us know. We'll get you on the table, send some of the other stuff, too. So we're trying to get the word out. There's a lot to do in Arc City. A lot of people say there isn't, but they're not trying to find it because, I tell you, I have stuff going on every day, pretty much, so. Anyway. Anything else?
The last thing I'd like to bring you, there's, we've got excess of money. This won't be completed or.
No, there's plenty of funds in that available for the.
And that's what they're used for. I mean, that's what that could be for is.
I just didn't want everybody, I just didn't want everybody thinking we got $7,000 in that way, a giveaway.
And it is, as Randy stated, the money is restricted. What can be spent on them is does fit the niche or whatever that they said should use it.
That being said, I move we approve a request from Visit Arc City to release the funds from the Transit Guest Tax Fund for website upgrades in the amount of $6,000.
Second.
Has been moved to second. Any other discussion on it?
I might, I might say that all this at work that Visit Arc City is doing will increase hotel stays, which increases the revenue generated by the bed tax. So that's, that's a good thing.
Feeds on itself.
Yeah, feeds on itself. But I know it grows on itself.
Well, it grows, I mean, it grows. Any other discussion?
It's a voice vote. If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So item for environmental services, item number one, is a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to accept a proposal from JCI Industries Incorporated to procure pumps, materials, and install new equipment for rehabilitation at the Country Club lift station for a total bid amount of $74,430.
And I would want to get a little bit more. Good evening, Honorable Mayor. I would want to get a little bit more background on this rehab. It has deteriorated to a degree that renews maintenance increasingly costly and compromises the ability to facilitate seamless flow. It's already past its lifespan, but with the forthcoming integration of Etna Visitor Center, the listation will further increase flow to it and sustain the modernization or rehabilitation of the station. So in light of this, I would like to go ahead and get the rehab underway, get it replaced with a better, I guess, it would replace the pumps, pull out of the piping in it, and have it set for another 20 years.
I think that was put in around 2000. It's never been touched since. So we've had a 24-year life out of it, so.
It's not as good.
Excuse me, is this a budgeted item?
Yeah.
Can it, but you come out of what?
West water funds. Yeah. It's been on, it's been slated for replacement. Couple of years now.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion for a resolution authorizing the City of Arkansas City to accept a proposal for JCI Industries Incorporated to procure pumps, materials, and install new equipment for rehabilitation of the Country Club lift station at a total bid amount of $74,430.
As we've moved to second, any more discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you.
City man or updates?
Good. I handed out a flyer to you, y'all, on the work session on the League of Municipality City forums that are coming up. The nearest one is on, in the Odeche on June 27th, so if you're interested in attending that, let me know. I understand there may be one in Wichita, but it wasn't on the list, so if I hear or see anything on that, I'll let you know. Also left on your table tonight a copy of the legislative update from our TMU lobbyist, so. Just an update on some of the items that are related to cities and utilities that are kind of ended up at the legislature this year. Also left you a copy of the project list Nick Rizzio is tracking, so if you have any questions on any of that, let us know. On the Phase Two walking trail, I know we updated you here recently that we had a meeting with KDOT and the engineer and that we, that everything was kind of moving forward and supposedly the. And well, we received an email from KDOT here just the other day that they're still waiting on some of the plans, and we've got some conflicting information from the engineer on that. So we have set up a meeting on the 14th with the KDOT and the engineer again to find out what is going on in, because we got to get to the Space Two Trail. It's the one that goes from Parish Park down to the Cali County Athletic Center and then ties back into the trail on the levee there on Lincoln Street, so.
We've been working on this thing over two years.
Well, yeah, more than that. I think we got the grant before I was hired and. It's, but it's, yeah. So it's really frustrating. We got to figure what's happening to get this sorted away. But on the bright side, we did, we did get notified from the Department of Health that the, that the permits to stormwater drain off on that construction part has been approved. So we now have the SWIP permits and those things that we were waiting on. So hopefully that, that'll help. Certain construction.
I got a question on that cost of 1.5 or 1.156 million dollars. Was that still old? I mean, is it?
Those are all estimates, you know, and that's been several years ago. So construction costs and it's hard to say where the actual, I would say we'll probably, hopefully those estimates were high. Because normally engineer estimates, when you do a project, you want them on the conservative side.
So what happens if they're too high? I mean.
We'll have to look at funding, whether we, I mean, hopefully we have the funds. We may have to alter the project a little bit to take some cost out. Yeah, until we get to that point, it's really hard to know, but. So that's kind of where we're at on that. We have a meeting set up with Creekstone on the 15th of May to discuss the water rate analysis, and so we'll kind of keep you updated on that. Last month, you got a report on sales taxes. Sales tax kind of year-to-date have been, have been down from where it was last year. So we'll kind of track that monthly and keep you updated, but the April sales tax questions were up over last year, but our compensating use tax was down. So it was basically a wash from last year, but so we'll keep you updated on that.
You might explain to people what also use tax.
Yeah, so that's the type, so sales tax is what's basically collected in stores, the brick and mortar stores. Now, when you go in and buy a can of green beans, you pay a sales tax. The compensating use tax is more of the online purchases, so when you buy something on Amazon or, or some of those other out-of-state things that where you collect sales tax consequences. So that's the kind of the main difference. And then, so I visited Jennifer about the auditor coming and presenting, so we're trying to get that scheduled, so it'll be, we'll either try to do it at the next work session or at the next meeting, one of the two, but we'll let you know on that. But from what I can hear or understand at this point, the audit should look pretty good. There's no issues, and it should be pretty clean. So you shouldn't get any bad surprises from that report. It ought to be a good one. Kind of like when you go to your kids'. Their grade four. And then we've been working on various grant applications. Nick and I met with Ramsey Financial and their, their grant writers about some options on a CBDG grant that's going to be coming up. Looking at possibly fire station, fire station upgrade would be the, if that doesn't work out, then we were looking at some maybe some type of trail or some type of recreation program. So, but we'll keep you posted on that as that kind of unfolds. And then public, this is Public Service Week, and on Friday, we're going to have an event for all the employees, and you're invited, and there's just a flyer on the, on your tables up there. So we're going to have a food truck event at Parish Park, starting about 11:30 to 1:30 or so. So we'll have three different food trucks there for the employees to choose from, a cluck truck, I think it's hog dogs, and taco trucks. So it'll be a nice variety there. Guys have time, come on out and enjoy some food trucks with the, with the staff. And then, yeah, last thing I want to update you on is I'll be gone tomorrow and maybe probably Thursday. My wife's having some surgery, so I'll need to be with her, so. But I'll have my phone on and computer with me and all that, so I'll be able to keep, keep in touch and if anybody needs anything, so. That's all I have.
Randy, you're too nice a guy to bring up what I want to bring up. I'm going to ask you. I think if you get criticized publicly, you should be applauded publicly. And so about a year ago, they were, we were, had some, some anonymous letters come in questioning investments. Could you tell us how those investments have done since?
Yeah, no, it's, of course, obviously, interest rates have gone up quite a bit in the last couple of years, so. But yeah, we saw a $140,000 increase on year-to-date investments this year in just that three-month period. So if that holds out, that would be close to a $600,000 increase in interest over the previous year with, with the investments. And, and that was a great conversation to have about the investments. We made some, we did make some changes and kind of solidified a policy, and, and so we'll be able to take advantage of those, you know, interest rates markets as they, they come and go, but it was, it was a good, a good move that we were able to move some money around. Had primarily, and again, it was a, in the past, or what interest rates were, they just weren't any matter.
Well, yeah. Five or six years ago, it was like .02 or something like that.
And, and, yeah, and so out of that conversation, we, we moved a lot of money out of. Yeah, and so out of that conversation, we moved a lot of money out of checking accounts and a lot more in CDs, obviously keeping, we wanted to make sure that we had liquidity and that the funds were safe and based on statute, so, so based on all that, yeah, it's been a good move and a great policy, and of course, you all approved that, and it's worked out well, so. And it's nice now, because for, for the, forever, we haven't been able to really, there wasn't any consideration of interest when our budgeting, and now it's actually, this is, you know, $600,000 is real money, it's a budget, and so it's going to make a big difference.
Is there any discussion by city commissioners, you know, or say anything about anything, or? Okay. Do we have anybody from the audience that's on the agenda, wants to talk?
We do, so Ken Herter is here, and he would like to talk about bike paths, electric carts, and golf carts.
Hi, here, commissioners, you all know me, Ken Herter, 1313 North First, Ark City. Randy, I spoke to him last week, I come into his office, and I had questions about the bike path, and he covered most of it there this evening. One thing he didn't mention is can you hang on to that grant? How long can you hang on to that grant? He wasn't sure when I spoke to him last week. People I talked to may be concerned that this is going to fall in, and you're not going to get to use that grant. The other thing on the electric golf carts, a year ago this last March, you approved side-by-sides and four-by-fours. I haven't heard anything negative about that for a year, which pleases me. I thought maybe, you know, it'd get a little crazy. I haven't seen any of that, but Chief Burr at that time said that he would, you turned down the electric golf carts, said you'd look at it in another year. Well, it's been about 14 months, so I spoke to Randy, I'd like for the commission and our new chief, Hallaway, to get involved in that again, and whatever it takes on research. I know there's other cities in the state of Kansas that allow it. We have people in the community who would like to see that happen, so I'm here again tonight to bring it up and dig into it a little bit, bring me some positive results.
Well, I think the big thing right now, Ken, I think is, I'm just talking out loud, but we're going to have to figure out, you know, the areas where you can drive, because if I go too slow, we go down Summit, you know, and we got to keep them off the highways and stuff, but it was, it's, but it's going to take some time to figure out, you know, where, if we decide to do something, where you're going to be able to drive them to, it's so worth like.
You know, most people's on one side of the town and the other, at your stoplights downtown, you could have certain avenues that you could cross to go to the other side, down by Wilson Park, kind of in the center of town, that's, just delve into it. I know we have people in the community, and it's sad to say this, but they're driving their lawnmowers to get around on account of their circumstances.
Yeah.
If we can do that, we can surely have electric golf cart, and that will faster than a lawnmower. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. We'll look into it. That's it, we got an executive session, how long do we need to be in executive session?
10 minutes. If we have additional questions, then.
Okay, I make a motion, we recess it to executive session regarding tax payment payments to this deferred acquisitions LLC for Zoot to KSA 75-4319, HSB2 for consulting for attorney for the public body of agency which will deem privileged in the attorney-client relationship for 15 minutes.
Second.
Okay, all favor say aye.
So we'll come out at 6:18?
Yeah, 6:18.
This conference will now be recorded.
Well, they all disappeared. They were scared, scared when we were going to come.
They heard me in the conversation. Your second?
Second.
Okay.
It's okay.
I hear a motion for German. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks.